Time to go.
Verizon says 7:30.
Yes, it does.
All right, what will we have? Planning and zoning, right?
Yes.
Plan and zoning commission, please come to order. Stan, George, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I do lead instead of flag of United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You want to get up?
I'm hurting from top to bottom.
Can you get your seat that'll lift you up out of it?
Yeah.
Get the other side, help him scooch in.
Let the records reflect the members that's present. Commission member should have received the draft minutes for September the 28th. Even though they say the 30th, it's for the 28th. Is there any corrections or additions to those other than the date?
Just the date.
Need to be approved.
Second.
Full discussion. All those in favor of the motions with amended to the 28th, singe five percent say aye.
Aye.
O's and N's. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. I just don't want to break the routine. Action items, Meadowbrook landscaping plan. Jim, you want to start us off on that?
I indicated in my written report that county landscaping ordinance which we have adopted has changed since the last time the Meadowbrook plans went through the review process. So just because we have a DARA that keeps everything valid doesn't necessarily mean that the county will, you know, look at things the same way. So the county didn't have approval letter on file and the fact that the ordinance had changed since the time it got through. Basically, we need to provide the county with consensus or direction that either we want the plans revised to meet the new landscape manual or stick with what's on the plans that basically would be what's out in Meadowbrook now. The difference is the old ordinance required street trees. The new ordinance requires a vegetative screen on corner lots, more lots that back to another public street. So instead of getting a tree at every lot, now you get no trees except at corner lots. So in this particular plan, I think we have, and I'm not sure if I put it in my report or not, but I think we have one intersection. So we've got, you know, four lots that would have landscaping under the new plan versus everything getting a little landscaping. So my recommendation was to match what's already on the ground out in Meadowbrook. And I think the old manual. I think by taking away the street trees, you're also kind of reducing the benefit from the public realm from looking at it from the street. I think it makes a nicer community when you've got the street trees. That's subjective, but it will match what's already on the ground out in Meadowbrook. So that's my summary recommendation on one.
Scott, do you have any comments on that? I mean, I'm kind of disappointed we're not having trees.
My personal opinion, I agree with what Jim just said. I'm all for respecting the built environment. If you already had certain things established as far as orientation of houses or even landscaping, I would think it would be positive for the neighborhood to continue with that consistent approach.
So my other thought was on this, Jim. Since we have already approved the plans as is, why does it have to come back to us again since we've already approved it?
Landscaping is one of the things that gets bonded. And we have to. While we've been holding the landscape bond instead of the county for recent projects, it's been a case-by-case approval. And in this case, without there being a landscape letter of approval to begin with, John Bowman at the county was not comfortable with issuing a new letter when it didn't comply. And I couldn't tell him that the planning commission specifically wanted one or the other because we really didn't talk about it. We talked about it years ago, but we haven't talked about it since the ordinance had changed. So he wasn't going to do it. He actually did a letter that disapproved the landscaping plan. But in that letter, he advised that if the planning commission wanted to stick with the old plan, that they would honor that.
So there won't be any feedback negatively if we decide we prefer?
Right, right. Basically, he put it back to the city, but he wanted to make sure that it was the planning commission's decision.
Mr. Hall, are you representing?
Yes. Basically, we have about half of the project finished. And with the trees, as we see, have heard no complaints that they shouldn't be there. And the actual cost that we're going to have for the rest of the project is going to be more than putting the edge. And but we feel that aesthetically, it's so much better to keep it the way it is rather than change something. And I think it's better for the lots and better for the community itself. So, you know, we're hoping to get it approved and keep it the way we had it in the first half of the project.
Okay, so you're looking at this as a form of a motion?
That would probably be the easiest way to put it in the minutes.
All right, then I'll entertain. At this point, I'll entertain a motion before we do any discussion.
I make a motion that new Meadowbrook adopt the same standards as the existing Meadowbrook development.
I second it.
Do we want to say new Meadowbrook? I mean, we're kind of saying like there's a new.
Future phases.
I mean, can we put a phase on that?
Can't you refer to a phase?
Now, can we include all phases on this? All future phases? Because right now, we're just doing 4A and 4B, right? Okay, so I move that all future phases of Meadowbrook development have the same standards as the existing Meadowbrook development. Landscaping, excuse me, yes, in terms of landscaping.
Okay, was there a second to that? I second it.
Now, that's no trees on the corner.
Pardon me?
No trees on the corners.
Or those people who have several lots.
Several lots, but not on the corners.
Not on the corners.
Yep, I agree.
Any other discussion? Comment from the floor? All of us in favor of the motion, singe five percent say aye.
Aye.
O's and N's. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much. And we're trying to keep this a pretty nice community. We're probably a little precious. I think we have one of the nicest developments out there.
I agree.
Want to keep it the same way.
Thank you.
So when are you breaking ground officially on Meadowbrook or on the new phase?
Just as soon as we can get the approval. Hopefully, within the next few weeks.
Great.
We're trying to, we have to do some, take in some forestry area or some trees out and move some ground over on the other side, which is going to be the right road there to Keenan on the other side. The contractor, we've already contacted, he's ready to go. And he wants to get in there and split the sewer work in while we can do it during cold weather or deep enough to frostbite.
Great.
So hopefully, in the next two weeks, we'll see some movement there.
So we'll see model house open by spring? Great, awesome.
All right. Who's your builder?
The builder, the creek side over here.
Bob Ward.
Ward, Ward.
Oh, great.
Fantastic.
He does a good job.
All right.
Excellent.
Moving forward. Ordinance and agreements, there's none. Jim, anything else on your report?
No, we can wait on the rest to talk about the transportation chapter, I suppose, when we get to that point.
Next month. Okay, I guess our active projects end.
Not really a whole lot to report. No news on Meads. You can see they're still out there chugging away at the Hys Road A. I'm starting to get a little bit concerned as the temperatures drop, though, about their ability to do the blacktop. I suppose they can put down the base coat and maybe not the wear course, but I'm not sure how that'll play out with, you know, opening its traffic. I would imagine that Hys is chomping at the bit to get the rest of that entrance done. So hopefully, they'll be able to do that before.
Is there going to be a stop sign coming off of Road A into the shopping center parking lot?
I believe there will. It's, I think it's actually going to end up being, I would have to look at the plan, but I want to say a three-way stop from the part that functions as Genevieve Drive, then from the Road A part, and also coming out of the shopping center. I think going into the shopping center would have the right-of-way, which is not unusual for a commercial development like that. But I'd have to check the plan to be 100%. I can send out an email tomorrow, though, and let everybody know.
I'll see you tomorrow at some point.
Nothing new on Antrim Mini Storage Creekside. There have been some issues between the developer and contractor. So it may play out that the top course of pavement does not get done this fall. They may be waiting until spring to do that. So I'm sure residents out there will probably not be happy about having to dodge the manholes and things like that over the winter. And fortunately for us, we won't have to push snow on it because it's not a city street yet. So the developer will have to continue to push snow on the streets over the winter if they don't do the wear course. We usually allow that to overwinter before we accept it. So we may end up getting two more winters before we start maintaining it. But at any rate, so, but they are trying to wind down. We still have the sidewalk issues to resolve out there. And they are going to be doing some additional landscaping that's kind of above and beyond what was on the plan. They've decided to add some evergreens between the backs of the homes on Amicus and Water Run, the ones that the backyards back up to each other. Basically, they want to put a row of evergreens down there. And for the most part, we're okay with that even though it is a drainage and utility easement. But there are a few lots that have a storm drain in that easement, so we're not going to allow them to plant anything in those particular lots. So I suppose that'll be a nice little perk for the folks who live along there to get a little, you know, little extra landscaping in. Nothing new on Carroll Vista Phase 4. They've been a little slow the last couple months as far as planting permits. Nothing new on Antrim Mini Storage or Sheets. And General just remains on here because we're still waiting to close out their escrow account, which they are very eager for us to do, but we're still waiting for a couple invoices to come through before we can do that. And that's about it unless anybody has questions on a particular project.
Kraus Ford, the sign, the new sign that's, or whatever you want to call that.
The tower.
The tower. I was going to say tower, too, but I went. That has to be attached to the building. And from just driving by, it doesn't appear that that's attached.
That's, yeah, that's, ends up kind of being like the Lance Chevrolet one where they made some gesture, if you will, to connect it somehow. I did speak with, I'm not sure which individual out of Kraus at this point.
Probably Tommy.
I think it was Tom, but I kind of got, well, I remember sitting in the room with about five members of the Kraus family about the project. And I'm not sure if it was at that meeting or subsequent. They ended up having some difficulties when the construction drawings were reviewed and that there's apparently some sway involved with the tower that would create potential damage to the vestibule to connect it as originally approved. And my direction to them was basically, we'll work with you, but there really should be some kind of connection between the two, whether it's, you know, something like, you know, conduit for the wiring or that somehow they should be physically touching.
I'm sure they could do some type of an expansion-type connection.
Right, and that's all that.
And that's all I'm asking for.
Right, that's all that I'm looking for. It's just something so that we can say in good conscience that it's attached.
They have one sign, not two, right.
Isn't that putting us in the building system?
Pardon me?
We're the builder and they're not.
I missed the first word.
That puts us into the, we're changing a builder and how a building is made. Yeah, we can't go out and change the way to build a house.
We're not asking to change that. We're just saying that for them to have two signs, like one of them has to be attached to the building. How they attach it is up to them. Pardon me?
So basically, they need to come up with some way to be able to say that it's attached to the building so it's not considered a freestanding sign. The alternative, I suppose, would be they could seek a variance with the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, you know, that may be, you know, they would need to prove that the hardship is not something that they created, which might be difficult. So it would be easier to.
And even there, again, just following up with what Mr. Glass said there, even if it's connected by means of the same footers, that is a connection. Now, does a sign have a separate set of footers? I mean, there's different ways to look at it.
I can suggest that.
I didn't look at the signs there, and I didn't go in and make sure that something's been.
I didn't. It's not our job to make sure.
But, you know, a builder knows what they're doing. They're not going to build it on safely. And they got to have it the way things are supposed to be. I mean, it's not like the planning and zoning is sitting here telling you how to build a house or how to build my deck.
And that's not the intent. That's not our intent.
We're getting where we don't belong now, I think. I haven't talked to them about it at all. It's not none of my business, you know, how they build your building as long as they build a nice-looking building. And they're doing it to Ford specs, not theirs.
They got to meet the requirements of the commission here and the ordinance. And that's all we're asking for, meet the requirements.
I will get in touch with them and remind them that it's supposed to be connected to the building in some way. So, and I'll leave their creativity unchecked as to how they do it. We obviously aren't going to have a legal update.
Okay, right. So we're moving up to Scott.
I'm going to touch on two things really quickly and then run away from the meeting. First one would be the school closures. It's been an interesting saga the past few weeks. I don't think that, other than having students come in and out of various schools just because out here, I don't think. I think it's certainly been a part of the discussion we talked about at this point. I guess what originally began with Charles Carroll and just kind of has grown up from there and everything, elementary level to high schools. It almost seems like now countywide they're referring to the minutes. So you can see how the work education extricates itself on this situation. But again, it's not going away. Student enrollment continues to drop and it's been dropping since 2006. There's no mitigation. Originally basing future facility plans on the fact that enrollment after 2020 was going to begin to gear back up. I guess with the assumption that we can start building in this county, we can put, but we've been doing about a third, a little less than a third of the number of residential permits a year that we were doing at our peak. So at this point, it doesn't look like we see the enrollment scoring compensate this way. So that's going to be then with a lot of schools that are not in their capacity but some that are substantially in capacity. So that's a tough choice to make. The other one was medical marijuana. I was curious out there. If state is interested in getting the thermosty, or if you guys are interested in getting the thermosty, now the area of Westminster are both, I guess, dealing with this issue via ordinance at this point. And they're actually going to address it in the residency and various ordinances. So if you guys are interested in getting the marijuana thermosty, I'll be able to help you out.
Want to help with my toothache?
Well, are they going to let every municipality grow it?
There are limitations all across the board. One of the limitations, I guess, is we're, if you have a facility that is going to grow it, they only have 15 of those facilities statewide.
Okay.
Get permission to do it. So I guess the final limit is, and that is, if you want to have, there are limitations. There are like two manufacturing facilities per senate district, state senate district or something like that. You have 47 senators statewide. So you can have, I think, 80, no, 94.
94.
Which you have 94 facilities statewide. To her difficulty, that can go ahead and process this stuff. And then as far as dispensaries, that would be limited at this point probably to drug stores or hospitals. But it's got to be, even at that stage, it's got to be kept separate and apart. You can't walk up to the counter, get your amoxicillin and then buy away if you have some of the marijuana for.
Too thick.
Too thick. It's going to have to be, for now, separate apart from other pharmaceuticals.
Well, it's not going to go away.
No.
It's not going to go away.
They'll have to have perhaps a separate room or sometimes a separate area for the dispensing.
So that means that any pharmacies in the defense would have to, you know, renovate or something.
No one knows what it's going to be.
Yeah, it's something that comes back. You're now five years from now saying, you know what? This is a hardship.
That's right.
I can't make any money for this. And all this might go away where we might eventually get it better.
Line of sheets.
So if you're interested in taking a look at what Westminster's drafted and so forth, I can give that to you guys just as an FYI just for curiosity.
Scott, not to dwell on it, but are municipalities looking at creating things specific to medical marijuana or are they just looking how it's fitting in the existing zoning?
Westminster wrote a text amendment.
They're overachievers.
So there's any ordinance, and they also are wanting to do a trooper by zone. And so they're going to limit it to specific areas. So they're, I guess, general industrial zone. And they're going to basically perhaps push it into the zones. Where you're going to have to come to them and ask permission to be able to do it.
Right.
If that line appears to be the planning commission and the city council, you would get that in a special zone and pull marijuana.
Right.
I don't think it's going to be an issue for the county.
But the idea of it fitting in zoning because it's pharmaceutical or horticulture or whatever, is that, or municipalities looking is, well, that's enough? Or do they really feel that they need to have something specific to it?
For now, our county zoning administrator is, I guess, pretty liberal with it. He just looks at it as a crop.
Right.
And our county has a, for now, it's a be addressed with our zoning ordinance. They can, I guess, if they find a facility that's adequate, they can go ahead and buy it. And so he's trying to kind of, she wanted to fit it in the existing language because at this point, the commission don't think, have it addressed in the tall locations.
Right.
Have those 15 locations been pinpointed yet?
Won't be until the summer.
By where we are, my interpretation has been very similar to the county zoning administrators. We permit agriculture in our restricted industrial district. And we also allow manufacturer processing of pharmaceuticals. So whichever way you want to call it, my interpretation would be it can be done here. So if the mayor and council wanted to change that, they need to take some action, but.
What's the size of those locations?
Didn't it have to be over five acres? Did I read that in paper somewhere?
I asked you.
Minimum was five acres.
They're number five?
I thought, don't hold me to it, but I thought somewhere in the paper it says five acres was the minimum.
There's a host of state requirements that are part of the application for the licenses that anybody's going to have to go through. And apparently, the application fees are rather hefty as well. So I don't think we're going to see them popping up all over the place. And as Scott said, they're limited to, you know, a number by congressional district as well, so.
In all practical, you know, it's something that'll be an indoor facility. And, you know, probably fairly large in scale, large in size, won't be something that they're going to run, you know, just seasonally.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Was that it then?
Yes.
All right. Jim, we're either back to you or whatever else.
I'll develop a draft for Chapter 7, but I did at least manage to get 90% of the way through what we talked about with Chapter 6 last month. I do still have to update the state highway information and Scott, while you're sitting here. But the county information was clearly laid out. And so that's all updated in the latest draft. So hopefully, everybody, I know I gave you a day or so less than usual to review stuff, but hopefully, everybody got a chance over the weekend to take a look at it.
Why get started?
If anybody does have any additional comments on the latest draft, let me know. Otherwise, I'll try to get the state information updated. And I guess we'll consider that a wrap for that chapter, at least until we go, you know, and do our 60-day review and see, you know, see if there's any public comment about it.
Okay. George, you had a comment?
Yeah, I had a question I wanted to ask Jim on page 42, which is the inside of the covering page. What about Fieser Road? I couldn't find it. Did he overlook Fieser Road or should that even be considered? That's not listed under any of the roadway facilities. And I was wondering about Bumgarner Avenue in addition to Roth.
Well, we wouldn't have any traffic counts or anything on there, but we certainly could. I mean, I think that's a good point. I guess it is.
Well, it's kind of a feeder street. It's got a light on it.
Yes, I think, again, I don't have, we don't do traffic counts within the city unless we have a developer who's doing something that warrants a traffic study. So we don't update statistics like that or track them really. But anecdotally, I think Bumgarner has seen an uptick in traffic, especially since the lights there because now we have people using, taking advantage of that light that may have formerly come out of Roth Avenue that now are, you know, taking the easy way to come out.
I just wanted to mention it, that's all.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion. I can, I can look at it and then there about Bumgarner.
And Fieser.
If you're considering going eastbound in the evening, anywhere from four to six, the only way from my house to get out is I go around. I, no, it's not the only way, but I could sit forever waiting to get out. But I go around to the light, because I know I want to get out to Fieser.
Exactly.
Might be good, like I said, maybe Fieser Road again too, in case the, the deal with the golf course ever pops up again out in that area. Been a few years back.
Right, absolutely.
Been like 15 years.
Been a while back.
I guess it is.
Yeah, that was on the table.
Couple of months we talked about that.
I'll, I'll put something together for this.
Okay, thank you. And then, you said Chapter Seven is the next one we'll work, be working on?
BB facilities, yeah.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to be ambitious and take a look at that on, on your own, and I, as provided time allows, I will, you know, to, to come up with a draft, I can take a look at it. I think that was helpful to kind of have some specific suggestions or discussion points kind of called out ahead of time.
Jim?
Uh, no.
George? No, not really. Then I guess November 30th is the next one. Yep, November 30th, next meeting.
Just real quick before we adjourn, just to, for your information, most of you may already know that the, the old pharmacy building across the street was hit by a vehicle recently and, and pushed it off its foundation. So if you do see activity over there, that, that's what it's about, and, and the county has advised them that they need to make repairs. So, you know, we don't know the extent of what's going to happen as yet, but if you see activity over there, that is the cause of it, it's not that somebody's.
Tearing it down.
I was hoping that a vehicle striking it would straighten it out.
Well, unfortunately, it did the opposite.
Went too far?
Because our, we have video of it happening, where you can actually see the building go. I think if it weren't for our building, it might have gone all the way over.
Do you see where it bent the rain spout, where it went over against the rain, your rain spout and bent it?
It hit, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I'd like to see that video.
I know, me too.
Get a million hits right there.
Put that up on Facebook.
So you could leak that.
George, you have an update when the museum's going to open?
What's that?
When's the museum going to open?
The date's not set, but it's going to be around March.
So it's not until spring then again?
No, it's going to be March.
Okay.
We're in the inspecting process. There's always something else that has to be done, you know. Yeah, we had to change some stripings on the handicap parking area. We had to raise a sign for the handicapped, wasn't high enough, and, but we're in a, we're in the inspecting process, and we're going to get occupancy permit shortly. We're getting close now.
No one has anything else to bring up? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a second?
I second.
All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes. Here.